Okay. Meeting is called back to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoops. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second that the agenda of September 10th, 2019 be approved as submitted?
Sure.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Hmm. Okay. We just did approval of the agenda, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it didn't pass and now it's moved on. Okay. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda to include the approval of the minutes of August 13th, 2019 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, and request to approve the recommended bidders is listed on your agenda, approval of a therapy dog at Indian Landing Elementary School, and approval of request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Treasurers' report. Oh, my gosh. May I have a motion in a second for approval of the Treasurers' report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending June 30th, 2019. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Special reports.
We do have a special report this evening and I'll invite our instructional team up. And as they're coming up, I'll introduce, we have Jason Di Lorenz, our brand-new Assistant Director of Professional Learning, formerly a social studies teacher at Penfield High School, Scott Dreschler, our Director of Special Education, PPS, Nicole Whitehead, Director of STEAM, and Kristin Williamson, Director of Humanities. And they're here this evening to give us a little bit of discussion on the work that took place over the summer because everybody on the board knows and everybody who watches knows that we do not take two months off in the summer here in Penfield and we're doing lots of work with our staff, our students, and our administrators. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
The clicker doesn't work. Oh. Yes. No. Do you want me to come grab that one?
It's good for the flow.
Next. So thank you. I don't know if you can hear me. See that? Okay. All right. Perfect. I am Scott Dreschler again, Director of Special Education in PPS, or People Personnel Services. And our team, again, as in past, we have the most well-attended because I think it might be the dynamic duo that we have up here and the dynamic duo over there. But thank you guys very much for your time tonight. We really enjoyed this presentation to talk about everything that happens over the summertime. It includes summer programs, curriculum projects, and all of the professional development that all of our staff are able to provide and take advantage of. So for the summer programs, we have the extended school year, which is kind of in my realm of the world. It includes the extended school year that we have for students with disabilities, the elementary reading and math camp, and the hybrid help. So I'll start with the extended school year for students with disabilities. So there are two programs that we're able to run in Penfield. It's administrators, Rick Borman, who during the school year is our elementary special education administrator. He manages and gets this up and running and closes it with support of all of the staff. This year, we had 23 and 1/2 teachers and therapists with 15 teaching assistants. And the students that take advantage of this program are determined at their annual review meetings each year by the Committee on Special Education. So throughout the year, the staff that work with the students and their teams, if students show some regression over some breaks, they'll collect data on that and where the student was before the break and where the student was after the break, and they'll bring that to the Committee on Special Education and make a determination of the students if they qualify. And they qualify this extended school year so that it helps alleviate some of that regression throughout the school year so they can start where they started at the end of the school year. The direct specialized instruction in core academics is to maintain that current skillset and then prepare the students for the upcoming school year. This year, we supported over 115 students from the K through 12th grade in half-day special class or related services. That's up a little bit from last year, which is great. Something we were able to do this year is we've been great partners with SEPTA and over the last year, the SEPTA leadership has really talked to us about how we can incorporate different field trips throughout the summer and enrich that learning, those authentic learning opportunities for students with disabilities. And we were able to incorporate the earthworks field trip this year. So we split the group in half, and half of the students were able to take advantage of the earthworks, which is a guided tour, and then the other half was able to go to Roffus Park to just transfer and practice their social skills training throughout some cooperative rings. And then they flip-flopped, which was great. So that was new this year. We also continue to have on Friday some of the bowling opportunities and the blueberry picking, which is one of the favorites for the students. So that was really great to be able to incorporate some of those ideas from SEPTA into our program this year. So the extended school year, the two programs quickly, that special class ESY program, we serve as 69 students this year. That program mirrors a typical school day, it's just shortened, and the students receive instruction in all of the core academic areas. The related service program, which is also part of this, is 49 students. That's up from last year's total. It's a staff of three, small group, or individual instruction, reading, writing, and math, and that includes speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, again, the students that qualify through the CSE. That's two days a week for six weeks. One thing that is great is that our summer school staff isn't necessarily always the staff that works with the students during the school year. So we have specialized teachers that work with students during the school year. The summer education staff is, can be vastly different. But it's a great opportunity for new teachers to teach varying needs of students. And at the end of the year, they write up reports, progress reports, for all of the students that participated throughout the summer, and they share those with the receiving teachers that have those students for this year. Sometimes it's the same teacher from last year and sometimes it's different. But that progress is great so that that teacher knows, all right, you were able to work on this, this, and this skill. This is where you were when you left. This is where you are now. And then also what we're able to do is kind of enrich it a little bit. If you're, say, a third grader going into fourth grade, those social studies and science units that they start, they will preview some of the vocabulary and some of those things for that upcoming school year in that special class program. Any questions about ESY, our two programs?
No.
I'll think of them.
Thank you.
I did it for 30 years.
Well, we are in our ninth year of our summer reading and math camp. So this camp is for students from all four elementary buildings. They can attend for reading or for math support or for both. This year, we had teachers from all four elementary buildings teaching as well as Bay Trail. In addition to just classroom teachers, we had special educators, literacy specialists, and for the first time, we had a speech and language pathologist as part of our program. So we really felt we were able to meet the diverse needs of the students attending these camps. We again had two 90-minute sessions, so that allowed for kids who did need support in reading and math to attend both. And we use our assessment, common assessment data from the fall and winter as well as teacher recommendation to determine which students are going to benefit from attending this camp.
Okay.
On the reading end of camp, we did, we had over 100 students attend the reading portion of camp. This year, we completely revamped how we set up the camp in reading. So we used to have students come and we would group them by grade level. Instead, this year, we looked at that assessment data and we worked with their current classroom teachers as well as any interventionist they worked with. And those teachers identified two to three specific skills that the students need to work on. We gave them a menu, and then we were able to group kids by those skills. So we had students working on various specific skills such as phonological awareness, so attending to the sounds and parts of words, letter ID, working on, some students were working on basic decoding and spelling, some were working on advanced decoding and spelling, monitoring their comprehension, summarizing text. And then all students, you kind of stole my thunder a little, Scott, all students did attend a station where they were working on vocabulary building, building background knowledge for units that they would encounter in September. So our fifth grade students, who are now at Bay Trail, they previewed ancient civilizations because that's a social study unit that they're in probably about right now. So they were able to preview some of that vocabulary, build their background knowledge so that when they walked into Bay Trail, all that new knowledge, they had something to sort of hang their hat on. And then we also integrated technology through some of the core resources we use in the classroom.
So for math, we had about over 80, 81, I think, 81 students attended in all our math camp, the two different sessions like Kristin explained. We use the similar format that we've used in years past as we've found a lot of success with that. So what that is, is children are separated by their grade level and then they rotate through three different sessions, each one being 25 minutes long. These sessions, one of them will focus on fluency because we all know that you need to be fluent with your numbers, and not just numbers, but other operations and computations as well. And then the other station was problem solving as we often find that younger students struggle with how to kind of dissect that problem and pull it apart and giving them really targeted strategies for using, such as, you know, underlining the key words and circling the numbers and that type of thing. And then the other station was using the iReady. We continued to use iReady last year and as well as this year. So all students that were attending camp took a diagnostic assessment at the very end of the school year, and then an individualized lesson plan tailored to that student's needs is generated, and then they were able to work at that at home and at school. And we also had some students not able to attend math camp invited, but then they were able to do the iReady at home if there was a problem with transportation or attendance or something like that. So that was a nice way for kids that weren't able to make camp to still be able to work, be working on those skills so they could start fresh the following school year. We also offered our hybrid health again. We actually reduced our number of sections rather than offering Health 1 and Health 2, two sections of each as we've done in previous years. This year, we only offered two sections of only hybrid Health 2, therefore requiring any students that take hybrid or Health 1 to do that in the school. We did that for a couple of reasons. One, to have the sophomores go through the program as it is designed for the full semester. And another one, it also makes sense from a financial standpoint as well because we only needed to hire one teacher as opposed to two. And we had 57 students in all, so they had to be incoming juniors or seniors to participate. Same topics as before, but they do manage to squeeze that whole curriculum into just a couple of weeks. So it is a pretty rigorous program, but our students are very successful, and we still do want to offer that opportunity because it does allow kids to take more electives or AP classes, frees their schedules up a little bit for those kids that want to take additional classes. So now Kristin and I are going to move on to the curriculum portion. So we were extremely busy over the summer. We had over 40 STEAM projects, curriculum writing projects, run from July to the end of August, which is a testament to how committed our teachers are to constantly improving our program and our instruction and what we can offer students. Every year, Kristin and I go through the same process. We meet with departments, we meet with grade levels, we meet with everybody K-12, basically explain the process, and then teams submit proposals to us that we then sit down as a team and look at in line, what's in line with where we're heading, what do we need, that type of thing. So we had 38 projects, a little over 38 projects, running on the STEAM side. A majority of them were science, which is, it's very exciting because we are shifting to the NISLIS, and I'm really proud to say that we are one district that is really ahead of the game right now. We wrote an entire new sixth-grade curriculum over the summer, which started being implemented last week, and it's really exciting because sixth grade, it used to just be earth science and it's more than that now. So they're actually, they started off their first unit all about what is a system, and they're talking about everything from weather systems to body systems. So all new equipment. Alan McNiff did a great job outfitting our sixth-grade classrooms, science classrooms, with lab tables that raise and lower so that they can be used for the classroom, all new, anything from hot plates to beakers, you name it. So there was a lot of work on that end, but then on the writing end, too. So all new assessments and all new instruction for our sixth-grade students. So that was a big portion, was sixth grade. We also did quite a bit of work at seventh and eighth grade. And another exciting project that I'm really proud of is we had our living environment teachers from the middle school meet with our living environment teachers here at the high school, and we developed one common scope and sequence in one unit to be delivered this year. So that's really exciting that everybody's going to be teaching the same order, which we've not had that in the past. Other projects that we had were our art. Last summer, we worked on fifth grade, so now we took what we did in fifth grade and we're starting to bring it down to the third and fourth grade, making sure that they are in line with our new transfer goals that the elementary art department created the following year. At Bay Trail, we also did some more revision with our home and careers and technology. Technology, they spent the majority of their time indicating or identifying power standards, and they are shifting towards using more standard-based grading practices. So identifying those power standards is really a key component and one of the first things you need to do. So that was exciting. On the math end, we are starting to shift towards the next-generation learning standards. So those math standards go into effect next September, but we had to make some shifts at sixth grade because a probability unit that always used to be in seventh is moving down to six. So if we waited till next year to make that change, we would have a group of kids never get that probability unit. So we are ahead of the game there, and we are having that unit be taught this year to our sixth graders so that they don't miss out on anything next year. So great work there as well. And on the high school side, we did some more work with our video game design class. We did some business work, and we redesigned the PE electives, which is exciting. That had been a while since that had been done. And then we started doing some work for Algebra I because they are also switching over to the next generation. We also adopted or are implementing new graphing calculators in the district. So we did some good professional development training that will be on Jason's slide when he comes later, but I'm really excited to talk about it. I had a math teacher call me today raving about how they can now walk through the room and at any point they can put any child or student's work they're doing on the calculator up for everybody. I had a teacher who's been here for quite a while call me today and say, in all my years, I've never seen kids so engaged because at any minute, they could be presenting in front of the class. So it's really exciting. These are called the TI Inspire calculators, and it's a great shift for us. So some of our curriculum work integrated those calculators into our curriculum. I'll hand it over to Kristin.
Thank you. So for humanities at the elementary level, our focus this summer was revision to the kindergarten, first grade, and second grade curriculums. So all of those courses are now aligned to the next-generation English Language Arts standards, which for us meant more of a focus on foundational reading skills, vocabulary, and grammar. And then with our kindergarten and first grade team, our humanities teacher on special assignment, Sheena Conway, was able to work with them and begin to integrate the New York State Social Emotional Learning benchmarks into some of our social studies units where they naturally would fit. So we have a unit in first grade about families, and you can see the example, recognizing that others may experience situations differently from oneself works really well into that family unit. So those teachers, along with Sheena, kind of found places where those benchmarks are naturally going to fit, and those are now in the kindergarten and first grade curriculum as well. At Bay Trail, we had English Language Arts, reading, and some of our social studies course, courses work on curriculum. For English Language Arts, they spent some time developing learning targets as part of their curriculum work so that the lesson objectives would be very clear to students and how students would know they're successful would also be laid out and very clear. And then they also spent time at Bay Trail working on vocabulary, which has the greatest impact on comprehension. So I'm happy that they were able to get that work done. And our eighth grade social studies team, they really work to continue to align their units with the New York State framework so that our students are ready for Penfield High School. And the work at Penfield High School was solely social studies for the most part. So Global 1, Global 2, and US all did extensive curriculum writing this summer, again, making sure that they're aligned to the framework. Our students this year took the new global exam, and those same students, excuse me, last year, it's gone by fast. And then this year, those same students will take the new US exam. So those teams worked really hard at making sure that their curriculum really pushes historical thinking skills, cause and effect, analyzing sources, understanding bias, things like that. And they did great work, and our students, I'm sure, are more than prepared for those exams and the historical thinking required beyond high school.
As if all of that curriculum development wasn't enough.
I know. I know.
Staff also participated in a combined total of about 3,400 hours of professional development in some form or another over the course of the summer. This took numerous forms, whether it was letters training, which Kristin was leading, also additional superkids training at the elementary level, or really great reading, the calculator training that Nicole mentioned before, and all of the education involving the new science standards. Also, at the leadership conference, we had National Speaker Rick Wormley come in and speak to us for two days about standards-based grading and the ethical issues surrounding all of that. And also, we had the Children's Institute come in and continue our initiative towards, you know, social emotional learning and increasing teacher education and awareness around that goal as well. So all of that combined total was really the focus of PD this summer, and we're going to carry it on and continue it throughout this school year as well. Do they have any questions?
That's your next slide. There you go.
The thing we had the clicker.
Board members? Barb?
I really don't have a question. I just have a comment that as a retired speech-language pathologist who worked over 30 summers, I find it just absolutely exciting to hear all the wonderful things that the kids are going to, are able to do with their friends as well as what else is exciting is to hear that they're not necessarily having the same teacher over the summer. So that, to me, that's an indication of growth in terms of learning to work with another adult or learning to work with other, you know, circumstances. So that's exciting, and thank you.
Mark?
Quite a bit. Quite a bit of work done. A couple of things you mentioned were things that I would say are relatively new in the sense that they were instituted since I've been here, and we haven't heard much about them, and I'm just kind of curious. The iReady was maybe four or five years we started that, I think.
I think we're on year six right now, six or seven.
So a little bit longer, yeah.
Yeah.
The, so has that, as our usage of it has matured and grown, has that still been able to suit our needs as we become more sophisticated in how we use it?
Well, funny you should ask. Both of us use it with our elementary programs, and both of our committees this year, our elementary committees, at the end of last year have indicated a desire to look at what else is out there because clearly the market has changed and there are other products out there. I can say that on the math side, there are a few others that we are looking at that we're going to take the next couple of months to look at really carefully and closely. I've been talking to other districts, as Kristin has as well. What do you use? What do you like about it? What do you not like about it? I'm going to Webster in a couple of weeks to look at the product that they're using. So I think it definitely fit our needs in the beginning. It was one of the first products like this where it could be adaptive, the assessment that they take truly depending on how the child answers the next question could be completely different. And there weren't a lot out there like that at the time. So they were one of the first in the market to do that. Ever since, though, it's growing and growing and growing, and I think it's time for us to look at a new one because exactly like you said, it's smart to look at something every five to six years anyway. So this time next year, we might be presenting a completely different program for you. But, so interesting that you asked that. We are looking at it. There are some things that I still really like about it and teachers like about it, and there's some things that I wish I could change.
Well, that's good. And now you're more sophisticated in what you want to look for, too, since you've been using that system, you know more what to look for.
Right. So previously, the district was using NWA, and we moved away from that to iReady because NWA was not standards-based. It was not aligned to standards. It was just purely skill-based. And we were moving towards standards-based ourselves and teaching towards standards and learning targets. They just didn't line up. The good news is that NWA has shifted, so that is one of the ones that we are looking at that is used by several other districts. But time will tell what the committees end up deciding is best for our students.
The other, second thing is hybrid health, it's been around for, I don't know how many years, I don't know, I'm going to guess, but it didn't seem like it was that long ago when we started that.
Probably 10 years.
Has it been 10? Longer than that, I think.
You're a principal.
How is that, you dropped and explained why you stopped the sophomore version. Is that still actively used? I mean, you had two sessions, two sessions this year.
Yeah. Two sessions, what, 57 students?
So that's still a pretty strong demand for that.
Yeah. There are still a lot of students that, because they are right by our office, and sometimes would they come out and I'd ask them, why are you taking health over the summer? Don't you have anything better to do? No. But their answer truly is they want to free up their schedule to take more courses. And I think it's good for us to allow that for some students because I'd hate for them to have to take a choice of something they have to take to graduate, you know, but it does now allow that student to take something else that maybe wouldn't have fit into their schedule otherwise. But it's not now for students to just put off.
Can I just add, because Nicole touched upon it, one of the reasons, again, using our data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that has been presented for the board, is one of those pieces around our push for social emotional learning and the focus on sort of the whole student, was that requiring students to take Health 1 in school for the full class, not the accelerated summer version, was really part of that conversation, is that if we believe that strongly around the health concepts, around depression, around drug use, around alcohol, then having students take it during the school year as a requirement versus the sort of quicker summer version. And that was also part of that conversation. So it's mindful in the sense of why Health 2 was allowed in the summer for hybrid health, but Health 1 is, we want to make sure our freshmen and sophomores receive that full course. It's a semester course during their school year.
Good.
In New York State, Health 1 is required. In Penfield, Health 2 is a requirement. We've looked at that before, that it is possible to take some of the required units from Health 2 and move them into Health 1, but we really were looked at in Monroe County, that people look at us for two health classes because we do believe in the topics that are covered and that focus on social emotional, the whole student. So in, to graduate from Penfield High School, you have to go through both Health 1 and Health 2.
And like Dr. Putnam said, by having the two separate courses, they can really hone in on some things like stress relief and things that might necessarily not be outlined by New York State, but that we're able to put in because we offer the two different courses.
And then the last thing is really more of a forward-looking request. You're going through and redesigning the science programs because now it's aligned in a different orientation.
Yes. Yes.
Now, for math, obviously math is math, but a math teacher might be more mobile from one discipline to another. Science is, may not be so. So it'd be interesting seeing in the future, as you go to integrating the different topics and doing it by grade level, how that affects the teachers, the science teachers, the needs of the science teachers and how you manage that staffing. Again, as you start to develop this, where does that leave us?
So luckily, we're only integrating six, seven and eight and they all have a general science certification. They, many of them also have living environment or something else. But because the Regents' exam is not going integrated, we won't be changing our high school program.
Okay.
So while the people who wrote the national standards and the science framework for learning all agree that integrated is best because it's more real life, right? We go through the world and all things impact one another and we don't live in a little silo. Until the Regents changes that, we really have our hands tied here because we want our students to be successful on those end-of-year exams. So it's only grades six, seven and eight that we are integrating.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
But we will definitely make sure that we, there are teachers that have been doing only living environment at eighth grade for several years. And this was one of the things that they were worried about in transitioning. But we're doing it nice and slow, one unit at a time for the, for grades seven and eight. And grade six, they, we started with them full out, but many of them are elementary teachers. So they're used to having lots of things thrown at them. So.
Thank you. Fantastic. Really enjoyed that.
Any other?
If board members don't have a question, I'd love to say something.
Okay. Well, Lisa?
No, no. Board members always go first.
I always have a question. Sometimes it's just in my head. Always very impressive, you guys. I really liked this presentation because it really shows the amount of work that we do as a district for students. So thank you for being here. Just a quick question. You had alluded a little bit about camp. And so I think there's a requirement for the reading and math camps that they have to attend all sessions or, right, they can't like be on vacation for a week or something like that. Do you think that affects attendance? Or do you know how that affects attendance? And then do we look at some of these kids, right, going into the next grade with a heads up to teachers about, you know, they missed camp or, you know, what kinds of things and strategies we can be implementing to, you know, get them off on a, on the break foot?
That's a good question. Do you want to go first?
So we do have some students that miss us a couple of days here and there, maybe a ride or they got sick or something like that. We do ask that if they're going to commit to camp, that they commit for the three weeks. If they can't, that's where we try to give them alternative things such as iReady. I don't know what we do on the math side. It certainly would work as well.
Yeah. Yeah, the reading side. She knows what they do on the math side. She knows it.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry. You know, I think that the secret is, you know, we have to have, we try, do try to make that a requirement because of staffing needs, right, and consistency for the kids who are there. Yeah. But, you know, I'm hoping not a lot of people see this, but we definitely, if you're gonna, if you are a kid who has those needs and you're going to show up for three days, we'd rather you be there for the three days than not. But we do try to keep it consistent for the other students in the program and the teachers. But otherwise, yes, I would agree. Some students have access on the reading end to iReady, but if you're a K-2 student, you have access to Super Kids at Home, RAS Kids, things like that. And then, you know, I think our providers are really outstanding about giving that support to students, our classroom teachers and our interventionists. You know, what can you do to help your student, things like that over the summer.
In answer to, in the beginning of the year, for those students, only Tier Two and Tier Three students are invited to camp. Those students are immediately automatically looked at in the very beginning of the school year regardless whether they go to camp or not. So the first couple of days of school before RTI has started, we don't want to pull students right away. Kristin sits down with her RTI coordinators. I sit down with our RTI coordinators. The first thing we do is we look at our list of Tier Two and Three students from the previous year. And then we start looking at some more recent data on them. So we won't forget anybody. Yeah.
So I had one comment.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Well, first of all, just excellent presentation and thank you all for being here tonight. It's so impressive, like just to Lisa's point, I'm astounded, you know, because the dedication that you put forth during the school year, I don't know, it always exceeds what I would, you know, my expectations. But then to bring it into the year round for the sake of these students is just, it's what makes us who we are and I'm very proud of that and we can't do it without you and everything you do. Now, I think I asked this question last year about how the kids see this, perceive it as camp. And I was just, I think at the time you said, no, they liked it. They saw it as camp and they saw it as fun. And I'm curious as to how it went over this year, if it was the same kind of reaction. Yep, they were into it.
Yeah. I think our coordinator, Nikki Heinsler, she's been the coordinator for a number of years. She is just super clever. So this, this summer's theme was construction and, you know, we set up little stations for them to do different things during the transition time, sort of construction-related, things like that. But no, yeah, they really do view it as camp. I had the luxury of spending a lot of time there this summer.
Yeah.
I had a great time.
Wow, nice. That's nice.
Yeah. But, you know, and our teachers are just so skilled at what they do. They make it fun. The kids are up. They're doing games that are physical, you know, they're hopscotching sight words, things like that. So I thought it was a really positive experience from, you know, probably spending half of my, the camp time there. I did other work as well, but I couldn't get enough of camp this summer. So no, I thought it was really positive. And again, I credit that to Nikki being really creative in how she puts it together for the teachers and the kids.
Wow. They just, that's, it's just, you know, the kids just benefit so much from it. It's wonderful. Dr. Putnam?
So I just wanted to mention, it's fun to sit here going into my sixth year in this role because you've all came on board in your new roles since I've been here. And this presentation gets better every year. So it really does. Jim is not here this evening. He is at home celebrating.
That's why.
He's at home celebrating a child's birthday, so I gave him the night off, you know, because we're focused on the whole student.
That's right.
There is no guarantee in vital curriculum. You didn't mention it once. But I just wanted to say publicly is that it just, is just a wonderful presentation. I don't know how to, we still as educators, all the time will hear the question until we're long gone is, oh, you have the summers off. It must be easy.
Right.
You know, and so I, you know, I don't have the summers off as an administrator, neither does anybody at the table. But even our teachers don't have the summer off. They are always doing something whether they're at PD, whether they're doing curriculum work. If not, they're doing it at home on their own. They're reading books. They're getting up to speed. They're doing lesson planning. And so it's just, I think, a great presentation in regards to what we do all summer long to make sure we stay ahead of the curve, support our students, support our teachers. And I also want to say kudos because we do have one new member who hasn't been at these last presentations. That's Jason DiLorenz, who is our Assistant Director of Professional Learning and is just getting very high marks from folks that he's working with. So thank you very much. You made a great addition to the team.
Can I do one shout out?
Sure.
Because I forgot to mention that Shane Waterson, the TOSA that I work with, she was a, she was a part of every single science writing day and spent most of her summer with me. She's probably rethinking her position, but I just want to give a big shout out because the work all, it's impossible to be in numerous places at one time. And because of her, we were allowed to do so much more than we would if it was just one of me. So I appreciate everything she did. And I should have said it earlier.
No. It goes back to the whole Team Penfield concept that it's not, you're not sitting there saying, this is all the stuff you did a number of times throughout this presentation. It's the teachers, it's the, it's the shout outs, it's giving, giving kudos to the other folks who make this all happen. And so just from me, thank you very much. Very, very honored to have you here presenting.
Thanks.
Dito. Thank you.
Thank you.
What happened here? Okay. No, any visitors tonight? Okay. All right. Levia. Hi.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening. Not a lot happening as school just begun, but still some really exciting things. Harris Hill, the fourth graders explored maps of New York State, finding rivers, towns, lakes, cities or mountains that started with every letter of the alphabet. Students at Indian Landing attended the Be a Partner Grade Level Assemblies, which are new this year, where they learned about being respectful, responsible, safe and kind in all school settings. Scribner held a kindergarten kickoff where new students were able to meet one another and play together on the playground with their classmates. Eighth grade ambassadors at Bay Trail hopped out in the sixth grade and new student orientation, instructing kids in helping them find their classes. The robotics team from Penfield High School held the Grateful Red Music Festival this past weekend, filled with lots of music and funds that will benefit their troupe this year. Also at Penfield High School, we had a very successful freshman orientation. First time we ever had a student-led freshman orientation by Sources of Strength and PHS ambassadors that I was graciously a part of. And we had lots of activities and tours. The freshmen were able to interact with the older students and bond with their peers. They even got free grilled bagels. And Sources of Strength also left positive and encouraging advice on all of the freshman lockers. Any questions?
Well, I saw the lockers coming in. So now is that, so what's the plan with that? Is that just to get, is it a kickstart or?
Yeah, that's just a kickstart. I think they're doing more activities. We have meetings throughout the year. We're going to do more positive messages in like the bathroom mirrors and like posters. But that's something Sources of Strength tries to do every year, kind of as an encouraging note. And they all say different things and they're all personalized for each person. Yeah.
Nice. Board members? Well, Levia, we missed you over the summer. It's nice to have you back.
Yes, it's good to be back.
Thank you for your report.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Dr. Putnam?
All right. I got to get back on my game because when Levia wasn't here in the summer, I didn't have to worry about her stealing my thunder. So now I gotta get back on. She always presents so much better than I do. So for this evening, we just have, I just have a couple of student staff honors, opening day comments, very exciting fire inspection report. And then I'll turn it over to Mark Sansucci for our annual, or our enrollment update, which we always do at this first meeting. I don't have a slide for it, but we talk about first day of, first day of school. I also just want to share that the board has their brand-new color prestige here. And I always like to embarrass Nancy Bradstreet, who comes to all these meetings but sits in the audience, our Director of Communication. And I really do, she really is behind this and the work to go from our non-glossy, non-colorful prestige. So this one's got all of that, you know, information in it from the beginning of the year, but as we move through this year, we'll see lots more color and photos. And I just think it's wonderful. And, yep, yep. Maybe my wife will read it now. So, because usually I, usually, you know, the front page is my painstakingly little letter I write and I don't think my wife's read any of them. So we always tease at home, so.
We'll call her every week and make sure.
You should. But I also want to point out that the front page is all about the presentation we just heard. So that goes at home to every family in Penfield and every Penfield resident around, student staff hone those skills through summer programs. And so just, it was something we're really proud of.
Yeah.
For, I can't say enough about the first day of school. I couldn't work in a job that didn't have a new beginning every single year. And that's why I love working in education. Just some great photos. Obviously, a lot more on our Facebook page. If you just need to smile one day, go back and look at that first day of school. You know, I think people that don't work in education always think, oh, kids are dreading the first day of school. You show up on the first day of school, it's, it's fun. It doesn't matter if you're in elementary school or in secondary school, coming back to school. I'm sure, I'm sure not everybody was happy to come back, but, but when you get here, it really is a great place. And so we had a great kickoff to school. Levia mentioned the day before the first day was the freshman-only start, freshman and new student start here at the high school. A great opportunity for kids to get in and walk their schedules and meet some people. And then we started and we've, we've now been in school, today was a week, right? Seven days? Is that, did I do my math right?
No.
No, five. Five. So five days, which is a week. So this is our first full week of school.
We can send you to summer math.
I might need to go to summer math camp. I heard it's fun, though.
The kids love it.
I do. So we're into National Merit semifinalists. Really exciting to mention that our senior, Morgan Higgins, has been named a semifinalist in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Competition. She's among sixteen thousand semifinalists selected from over 1.6 million juniors who took the qualifying exam last year.
Wow.
And she'll now move on to compete for one of the seven, 7,500 National Merit Scholarships. So we might see her name back here again.
Wow.
Our annual fire inspection, just like, this is an annual piece we have to go through. And throughout July, the annual fire inspection, as mandated by the State Education Department, took place in all buildings of the Penfield Central School District, not just our schools, but all of our buildings. Ms. Dawn E. Howe, the Fire Inspector from Genesee Valley Educational Partnership Health Safety and Risk Management Office, conducted the inspections. All buildings were inspected. Reports are on file. Any violations that were noted by Ms. Howe have been corrected. All buildings are in conformance. And as required by Section 807A of the education law, public notice of the filing of the fire safety report will be published in the official newspaper, The Daily Record, this Friday, September 13th, 2019. So if anybody wants a copy, we get one and you can read our fire inspection. That is it for me. It's short. We just started and we'll get lots more positive statements from me as the year unrolls. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for enrollment.
Thank you. Traditionally, at this meeting, we give the board a brief update of where we're at with regard to enrollment on the opening day of school. As you know, you get a much more comprehensive look at enrollment projections and where we expect that we'll be in, in five years on, in November. But this is sort of our dipstick of what, what did we expect to see and how did we do. If you'll remember also from previous years, this tends to change. So this is the opening day of school and we pegged for our enrollment purposes and sort of our planning purposes and, and sort of as the standardized fixed day for measuring enrollment is beds day in school, which is in October. And I'm always a little amazed at how much things change between the first day of school in September and October. Folks come, folks leave, things change, sometimes significantly. But for now, this is what happened as of September 5th. So we projected about, just over about forty-six hundred students. So in eighteen nineteen, enrolled in the, in our schools, we had four thousand five hundred fifty-eight. Our projection was that that would grow by about thirty-five students. In fact, it grew by forty-seven. So twelve, a difference of twelve spread over these grade levels. So you can see that we under-projected just a little bit in kindergarten, fifteen students, a few students less than we projected at, in grades one, five and six, eight. And the difference was made up by an increase over projection of ten students in, in the secondary schools. So, you know, over, overall, we end up at four thousand six hundred and five students. This is, you know, it's well within sort of the range of error. Twelve students is, the model works, the, I think we've discovered that in past years, that we can fairly accurately predict our enrollments in the short term and in larger groups. It gets more and more difficult the longer you go out. And to try and predict a single grade level is very difficult, particularly kindergarten. But I think we're doing okay. You have, there's also some information here on elementary schools. So obviously, that's where we see the biggest shift, particularly in K, as our elementary class sizes grow. And I apologize for the size of this, but I have a summary in just a second. You can see here that our average class sizes are all, in all the grades, and this is just Cobble's and Harris Hill, but in most of our schools bumping right around our caps essentially of twenty-five students at grades four and five and twenty-two and grades below that. So pretty full, I think is fair to say. And these are the, essentially the same, the same information for Indian Landing and Scribner. What gets lost, I'd like to take a step backwards, I think, or away from this data, because what gets lost when we look at it in this sort of grand what gets lost when we look at it in this, um, sort of granular detail is this. And I, this is not a, there is no summary here of high school and middle school, 'cause really we're just looking at the elementary enrollments at, for this lot, purpose of this slide. And you can see that Scribner, uh, has twenty-six sections and an overall enrollment of five hundred and sixty-two students. Harris Hill, at this point, nineteen sections and four hundred and seven students. So, um, we'd had a practice, um, for many, many years of, that was allowed, uh, to be maintained by a, um, a fairly complicated bus shuttle system of maintaining enrollment, about equal enrollment in all of the elementary schools. When we moved away from that, um, we have since then avoided redistricting. So we lost our one tool for sort of moving around students and we haven't undertaken the sort of ugly process of redistricting. And so, um, I think that it's fair to say, this is sort of foreshadowing, um, that we're going to need in the next few years to begin to look at that. You know, there's, um, you know, there are certain fixed costs in a building, administration and so on. Right now, there's one principal for five hundred and sixty-two kids in Scribner, one principal, uh, or nurse for four hundred and seven in Harris Hill. There's questions of equity, of capacity, of room space, and so on, that really just need to be addressed. So that's, we don't have a recommendation for that right now, and I think we should consider this and move a bit slowly. So, um, we know that there's developments going on, um, locally, uh, that are gonna impact, um, the Scribner, uh, Scribner sub-district, but there's also development out in Wayne County. So this is a, um, a Google map of a proposed Ryan Holmes development on Milo Down Road, which is just south of Ganonda Parkway. So it's the far edge of our district and it's in Harris Hill. The, it is, this is the preliminary sort of presentation to the, um, to the, uh, town board for, um, that subdivision. They're actually in this presentation asking for an extension of an existing sewer to be able to serve that sub-district, and they're, uh, requesting or planning on about a hundred and fifteen units. So a hundred and fifteen units, um, will pretty quickly fill up Harris Hill. Obviously not all of those, we know this from our previous experiences, right? Not all those students will be elementary school students, not all of them will be public school students, there will be high school and middle school kids as well. But we also know that in, um, housing developments of that nature and at these price points, they tend to be young families with little kids and they tend to be elementary school kids. So it may be rebalancing itself naturally, um, although it very much deserves keeping an eye on. This is, this development's far from approved, it's working its way through the process, they're in conversation right now, it hasn't been approved yet, it's very much at the early development stage. So how, you know, if that shows signs of not moving forward, I think we're going to need to be, consider being more aggressive with, um, you know, with what we do with regard to redistrict. It is a Ryan development, yeah.
It'll go through. It always goes through.
Oh, yeah, once they get approval. Yeah, I mean, they need to work through a political process and a town process and all of that, um, and government tends to grind slowly, but once they have approval, when they mean to, they can put up houses, so, and it happens fairly quickly.
And Mark, this is the town of Walworth, it's not the town of Penfield, correct?
Correct.
So it's all happening in the town of Walworth?
Right.
But Penfield?
But Penfield schools.
No, no, I get that part, but, um, the approval process.
Oh, yeah, it's all theirs. It, uh, Penfield, the town of Penfield has nothing to say about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. All right, so, um, you know, the other thing I left unsaid, I suppose, is that assuming that this goes forward, it still leaves us kinda with that somewhat messy map of where folks attend. But, um, you know, that, we've lived with that for some time. I, I think it's just important that we not lose sight of this issue. I think, um, just in terms of foreshadowing and planning and thinking, and as we move into our planning processes, um, this is gonna be an important part of it. So what are our next steps? Full review of enrollment at the November fifth board meeting, that's the meeting where we go through this in lots more detail and, and kind of talk about what our projections are and take, and use it really as a budget planning tool as we start to kick off that process. And certainly we'll consider it, um, as part of long-range planning and as the District Facility Committee, uh, begins to meet again, that'll be in their, you know, part of their considerations as we start to think about future capital projects and where space might need to be. So are there any questions on that at this point?
Board members? Bill?
Um, we do a projection every year.
Correct.
Do we have any long-term projections that are reliable?
Well, we do, the projection is five years every year, it goes out five years. And, you know, that, I always like, I always say it's, you know, the one-year projection's pretty reliable, and by five, it's starting to, you can extend it out for ten years, um, but then you're projecting the enrollment of students that have not even yet been born. And it starts to, you can do it, and very often, New York State requires that we'll do it for things like building projects, but I always feel like that ten-year projection is pretty, I would hate to stand up and defend it, you know what I mean? It's, I can, I can show you the math, um, but in terms of its ultimate reliability, it's not so much there. The reason, one of the reasons honestly that our projections are reliable is because we do them every year. You know, we pick up little errors every year, we re-correct, I'm off by twelve. If we did this projection every five years, all of a sudden you start to see that big variance, 'cause you're not self-correcting, right? So we're projecting to grow, I think, over the next several years. Our enrollment seems to have bottomed out and continues to grow. We know that from our elementary class sizes starting to bump up. Those bigger class sizes will continue to work through the system, right? They won't go away. And as long as we begin to pick up, um, sort of increased enrollment at the elem, at the kindergarten level, that's gonna continue as far as I can see.
Any other questions? Okay. Is that it?
That concludes superintendent reports.
Thanks, Mark. Sorry, I didn't, I thought there was more to that, sorry about that. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Okay. All right. All right, uh, board members, we are on item six A. Can, is it? I have, look at this. We just did, no, we just did that. Got it, yes.
Tom read it, but it's basically the same thing over again, just a declaration or whatever.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
What would I do without you? All right, annual fire inspection, fall twenty nineteen. During July twenty nineteen, the annual fire inspection, as mandated by the State Education Department, took place in all school buildings and outbuildings of the Penfield Central School District. Uh, let's see. Okay, well, so I, it's just what Tom did.
Right. It's just.
Do I have to, or?
No.
Okay.
You can just say it.
So what I was gonna read is everything Dr. Putnam already talked about, so we can move on. All right. So now we are on item six A, contract with Villa Hope. The district is contracting with Villa of Hope to provide mental health and substance abuse disorder services for students and families based on service requests from Penfield Central School District from September one, twenty nineteen, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty. The district will pay Villa of Hope a fee based on usage. The rate schedule is included in the attached contract and is not anticipated to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorized the student of, the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Villa of Hope? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. Agreement with Association of Penfield Teaching Assistance. All right, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the agreement between the Association of Penfield Teaching Assistance, the APTA, and the Penfield Central School District effective July one, twenty nineteen, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, or, excuse me, twenty twenty-two. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the written agreement between the superintendent of schools of the Penfield Central School District and an employee of the district executed on August twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Okay, Bay Trail textbook approval. All right, this is the book, The Outsiders. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approved the above-recommended textbook as presented on August thirteenth, twenty nineteen? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. All right. MC SBA committee meetings. Mark and I were at Legislative Committee meeting last week. I can't believe it's first day of school, you jump right in, you know? You have to just go right for it. Sherry gave like a three-page summary of everything that's been going on. There's, um, there's a lot happening. I wanted to know, did you wanna just give a quick summary? Were you prepared to do that, or?
Uh, they say there's quite a bit, and one thing we've talked about is a better way to share some of these, 'cause, you know, we're on Legislative Committee, the Information Exchange, and the.
Labor Relations.
Labor Relations Committee. There's a lot of information, and we, we're, we're talking about how we can better disseminate that amongst each other, so we're going to set something up, so then it'll be easier. If you look at it yourself, 'cause summarizing the volume of information in a, in a two-minute thing is just, doesn't do it justice.
The other thing, too, is Sherry mentioned, um, uh, Law Conference that's coming up. I think it's September twenty-sixth, and it's not, it's not associated with the NISBA. Uh, you know, I thought, when I heard it, I thought it was, you know, the day before the NISBA conference, but this is another one altogether, and it's going over some new laws, and I don't have those laws that's gonna be covered, but, um, there's a lot to it, and she's recommending that superintendents go, and as many board members who are able and willing to go, to go. It's September twenty-sixth, I believe, but I can get you the information. And, um, that was, yeah, that was something that was.
It's a Thursday.
It, yeah, that's what I thought, and it's.
I'm getting the crown that day.
Oh, sure.
I just knew I was busy that day. Really? Oh, bummer. All right, but we can let you know about that, and actually, Sharon, you, we have to remember about that, so, um.
We'll get something out.
Yeah.
For the law conference?
Yep.
Yeah, for the law conference. All right, um, under new business. NISBA al, alter, alternate voting delegate and proposed resolutions discussion?
Oh, yeah, we have a whole lot of discussion.
What do you got?
Do you, oh, do you want me to go? So I sent you guys the link for, um, the resolutions, and I think you kind of alluded, they're sort of all over the place, Sharon, I, they're very strange in content, that's how I'm feeling about it. So I invite you guys to look at it. Some things that stood out to me, I don't really love the intent of resolution number five, um, it, which, it talks about putting a task force together to look at special education costs and delivery of service, which I don't, not opposed to, except that the whole rationale is cost-driven, and it talks about a thirty percent increase. And I'm like, okay, well, let's take a step back and look at the mental health needs of our teens increasing over the last ten years by double digits, and research really indicates that this population is really hit hard, so I'm not surprised that our costs are rising by thirty percent. So I, I'm just not sure what the intent is of that.
So I think it's important. Now, you read the resolution, the background information.
Right.
Yeah, because.
Because when I was reading the background information, unless there's more than the rationale, it's all about cost. It doesn't talk about student need. It, to me, it reads about cost. So, you know, that's just my concern with it, and it doesn't talk any specifics about what the task force, who's on the task force, what, what they wanna do with the information. You know, it talks about looking at cost trends and other as, aspects of special education system delivery and make recomation, recommendations. So, you know, I'm thinking, who's making these recommendations and, and what's the intent? So that's just my two cents. I, I'd be interested in amending that somewhat to talk about maybe what the intent is, or make sure it's student-need focused, um, and looking at trends in social-emotional health. What I find interesting about this, though, is that several resolutions down, they talk about increasing the age requirement for individuals with disabilities to attend Special Olympics. So it's like, I feel like they're talking out of both sides of their.
Yeah.
Whatever, you know? Both sides of their mouths, right? And especially last year, when there was so much around social-emotional health and mental health, I'm seeing a lot of growth in, in, in my circles around individuals with disabilities and emotional disturbance and those types of classifications, which then fall in that category, but is also mental health-related, so, I don't know, I, I just find it sort of interesting.
Yeah. And I think it's important that, as Lisa said, people look at it, if there's questions you have about this, things you don't understand, can present them to Lisa, because on October fifth, Lisa, and who the alternate is finally came out.
Well, we, well, we have to talk about that, too.
Whoever the alternate is, if they can, and Lisa, and then I'll be going, uh, because I'm on the committee. Uh, we go, we meet in Canandaigua with other, with all the other Area Two districts, and we go over these, and we, and someone from NISBA is there who will provide background information, uh, why things were the way they were, and they can also speak to some legal, legal aspects of it. So one, we can go over the questions, and then we can get explanations back, and this is straw poll, which is just straw poll. But at least with that information back, then we can come back and say, now we are better informed, and this is what we feel about a resolution, and to like what Lisa did, it says, maybe do an amendment. You did one last year, it was very successful.
Yes, except amendments are due, well, it was, that was sort of a hoopla. Amendments are due in by September twentieth, so it's, what I did was more of a hoopla, I was sort of last minute, so it's, I think it's nice if we get them in early, if we can, but I don't know. There's also a couple at the end, which I thought was interesting, around board policy. So that's like resolution nineteen and twenty. I, I'm not opposed to it, I just find it interesting that I feel like it sort of oversteps, but that's just my two cents.
Was it with the not recommended section?
No, it was in the recommended section, but then there were some in the not recommended section about board policy that, that the resolution committee came together and said, "Well, that's overstepping," but then there's some that they said are not. Like, again, I feel like they're, whatever, anyway, it's interesting. But we do need an alternate, so I'm gonna be going to the meeting on Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
The fifth.
For voting, or the, whatever that's.
Are you talking about for the meeting itself or for this discussion?
I don't know if I'm going to this, 'cause I just saw the state, I thought it was in September, and I'm traveling the week before, so I have to check my flights when they come back. I don't know if I can do that. But we do need an alternate. But do you wanna be an alternate voter?
Yes.
So like on that Saturday, because Mark can't be an alternate, 'cause he's on the thingy. Okay.
Does the vote, voter have to go to the Area Two meeting, though? That was my understanding.
No, no, it's, it's not required, it's not compulsory, it's just, it's a good opportunity, and, and again, I'll, I'll be there, and if you're, if you're there, then that'll be fine.
So Bill's gonna go to the Area Two meeting?
Yeah.
And be the alternate?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Check. Then we can write all our stuff.
Yeah, then we can actually start writing something down.
Okay. So then, I mean, I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at it.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it's just.
I know, I missed that.
Well, I, you know what, I threw it at the bottom of, uh, it came out last week, and then you sent it to me to make sure I got it, which I did, and then I put it at the bottom of my board questions, like.
Oh, okay.
The link to the PDF, which is nice, 'cause then you don't have to try to go to the thing.
Can you maybe like, in a subject line, resolutions?
You want me to resend it?
No, no, you don't have to resend it.
I'll do it, I'll do it right now.
No, you don't have to, I'm, I'll, I, okay, whatever you like.
Because I just sent it to myself so I could open it and just try to somewhat talk intelligently.
No wonder I missed it, it's like, okay. See, I always feel bad, you know?
No, I can forward it.
Okay, well, thanks. All right. And now we have the, um, the board liaison signup sheet.
Oh, but maybe I can't.
It just said it's available, yes, and then.
You just said something went wrong.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. So just email me your preferences and then I'll.
I can do, I think I can do something next week, one of the early meetings, I'll email you, because I was thinking sometimes that's hard, because people can't do that, so, um.
Yeah, just emails best.
Well, I have one request.
Yes.
You know, in previous years, some people have been very enthusiastic, and they sign up for everything right away, and it makes it hard to find things that fit your schedule.
Right.
And maybe we could have everybody just sign, submit themselves to one signup for each of the PTAs.
One per school, you mean?
Right, well, you know, plus you got SEPTA and PAB, at least until everybody has a chance to sign up.[1699.97]